At this time Chairman Ryan Mayberry indicated he may be a few minutes late, so rather than delay the meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. So I will fill in for him. So the call to order, this is the County Commissioner meeting, November 28, 2016. I will give the invocation and then Larry Yoder will handle our pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand.
Father, thank you for this day that you blessed us with, Lord. Thank you for what looks like impending rain that we so badly need. Lord, we ask that you guide us and lead us in all our decisions tonight as we learn more about what the future holds for Alexander County in regard to the alcohol referendum. Lord, we ask that you bless our emergency personnel, our police officers, our EMS, our firemen, our volunteer firemen, and all the people that contribute and help to make this a wonderful county. Lord, we ask that you guide us and lead us in the days that follow. We thank you for your many blessings. Amen.
Chief, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to look at our agenda. I'd entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Please, Mr. President.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Is there any comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor moving forward, please raise your right hand. All right, moving to our agenda, we have items for discussion. And item number one, discussion of procedures, compliance, permitting, inspections, et cetera, related to the recent passing of the ABC alcohol referendum. I would recognize Laura Lee, Director, Pricing Division, ABC Board Audits. And we also have David Husken, CEO of Rich Shop Associates. So...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to do a short presentation. This one focuses particularly on an ABC store and that question, that piece of the referendum. And then if you have questions about it or other aspects of the referendums that passed, I'd be happy to answer them. So, the first question then, you have a, this first decision you have to make is which way you want to go at this point in time. And probably, the key question is whether or not Alexander County can support a second ABC store. And I will discuss that in more detail in a minute. But I wanted first just talk about your choices. I will say that just because the referendum passed, that doesn't mean you have to open an ABC store, obviously. Unless one is economically viable, the commission is not going to insist you open one, and the commission is not going to set a timetable for you to open a store. You take as much time as you want to study the issue, to determine if another store can be supported, and then how you best to go forward with that. So, first question is, where do you go first? One option is for the County Commission to appoint a committee to study it, to do an economic development study, to see if a store can be supported, if there is enough traffic, business in the county to support a second one. I will say, you know, pretty much everyone in North Carolina who's going to drink alcohol is already drinking alcohol. So every new store that opens is pretty much slicing that pie thinner and thinner. Unless it's in a high-growth area and you've got more people moving in, which certainly would affect it. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind. A store, another store will generate some additional business in the sense that it's a convenience, but you're just taking business from other stores when you open a new store, more often than not. So, a feasibility study could be step one, and you could do that as a County Commission. You could appoint an ABC board and task them with studying that. That's another option. Another option would be if you're confident that Alexander County does need another store and could support one, you might look at then just discussing merger options, and I'll get into that in more detail with Catawba County, say, like Taylorsville has done, and work with them to open an additional store in the county. So you have choices there of which way you go, and that's entirely up to you. There's no right way to do it, no one way that makes sense for everyone.
In regard to that feasibility study, is that something that you get assistance with, or is that something that you work with your EDC and others? And, I mean, I guess one thing you would probably want to glean from that is what are the current sales at the Taylorsville store? Because obviously that'd probably be the pie, the slice of the pie that would be split initially with the second store, some of that as well.
Some of that, it would depend on where a second store were located. We don't have the expertise at the ABC Commission to do that, so that would be your responsibility, whether you work with your EDC or some other, a private consultant, to go in that direction.
Okay.
Oops, excuse me, I'm not used to this rollerball. So, one, this is how you're going to determine whether or not a store is economically feasible is revenues. You have to meet a certain minimum revenue to be profitable today. And the last bullet point here says 1 million is sales needed. It's very hard in 2016 to be profitable, to have sufficient profits to distribute money back to the appointing authority if you don't do close to $1 million in sales. And that's because the profit is not huge on liquor. Folks think it is, but it's really only 22% to 24%. And I've got a graph on the next screen that'll show you that. 53% more or less of the cost of every bottle you purchase in ABC store is cost. It goes back to the supplier and comes back, a portion of it back to the ABC Commission that funds our work and also supports the warehousing and delivery of the product. So that's 53%. Another 22%, 23% of that retail price is taxes. They come right off the top, go to the state's general fund. So you're only left with between 22%, 24% of the retail price of every bottle as gross profit. Out of that has to come all your operating expenses before you look at the net profit that would be your working capital distributions. Okay? And then that retail price is a formula. It's a formula that, that markup formula is applied to every single product, and of course, I'm sure you're all aware, the pricing is uniform across the state. So, a particular product, bottle, in the Taylorsville store costs the same as it does in Raleigh, Charlotte, Wilmington, and so on. So the $1 million is, is the key. And this, this is a graph. You see on the right's, my right, that, that large piece on the right, and on your screen you'll see it's a blue, that's cost. And then that bottom-left piece of the pie, the purple, is what goes right off the bat to the state. And then what's profit is really just that orange-colored segment at the top-left there. That's your board markup, that's the profits to the board, the board gets to use for operating expenses and so on, so...
Is there data available publicly for the stores, like for instance where we would, I mentioned Taylorsville, and then also would be probably Catawba County 127, where you think you might pull that revenue from? Is there data available store by store, so when you're doing that feasibility study?
There is, there is, and I certainly can supply you with that. And some of it will be in the annual report from last year you have in front of you that we'll talk about in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so the way an ABC board is, falls under statutes in 18B 700 and 701, and I did leave a couple of statute books with Jamie for you to use for reference. But basically, if you appoint your own ABC board, then the County, then you can choose to appoint three or five members. It's up to you. And they would serve for staggered terms, one, two, and three years to start, and then they'd be reappointed for three-year terms. So you, as the appointing authority, select the board members, you set their compensation. You can remove them for cause, but beyond that, your authority ends, and then the ABC board has the sole authority of managing their stores. Okay, so, so your authority begins and ends with the appointment, setting, compensation, removal. And that ABC board is a public body, just like you are, so they have to follow similar ethics rules, they have to follow open meeting laws, that sort of thing. There's no state requirement for how you choose those people, that's up to you. And you would follow, I assume, the same requirements you do for other boards that you appoint.
Were you hearing the boom and the pop?
No.
I think everybody else was correct. Let's try that. Okay. So we'll see if that works better.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I will say, if you do go the route of appointing an ABC board, some of the key things to be considered, you would want members with varied backgrounds, varied, varied areas of expertise. You'd want people with time to invest, because if you were going to appoint a board and task them with studying the feasibility of a store, they're going to need the time to put into that. So that, so once, once you've determined that you can support another store in the state, and you have a sense of where that store would be, where you could put a store and there'd be enough traffic to support one, then this, these are just the general steps, and these are covered in the statutes also, of how you open a store. You identify a location, you put together a business plan showing what it's going to cost to get that store up and running, how you're going to fund that. An ABC board needs to secure their own funding, and this is a major hurdle for new ABC stores, I will tell you. Because if you were to go out on your own, open your own ABC store, that ABC board has no collateral to put against a bank loan to, for those operating, for those startup costs. And so, you know, the past five or six years, new ABC boards have struggled to get funding because, because of that. And you, as an appointing authority, can't provide them with the funds, nor are you liable if they were to go out of business and couldn't pay their debt. So you're out of that process. So they would, again, identify a location, put together a business plan, secure funding. They would have to post notice on the location, because the public would have to have 30 days to comment on, on that proposed location, and then that request comes before the commission for approval. So that's the process to, in a nutshell, of getting a store open.
Let me ask a question. It says, "Put together a business plan." Now, does the ABC Commission help with that at all, or what's, what's the...
Yes and no. I can provide you with examples that other boards have done. I can't tell you, I'm not going to have that information. I can give you a format, I can work with someone, but the ABC board is going to know what they anticipate their revenues to be, what their startup costs are going to be. I can, I can give you some of that information, but some of it's going to be specific to the location.
Right, yes.
Right, but yes, I certainly provide help there.
Okay. And I guess the size of the store would dictate how much inventory cost would be on the...
Right, I think I have that, that's coming up.
Okay.
Okay, as I said before, the board is responsible for securing funding, either, you know, bank loan, a line of credit, a combination. Their only collateral is future profits. And as I said before, the appointing authority is never liable for that debt. So in terms of expenses, it, an ABC board today going into, going into rental space pretty much needs a minimum of about $250,000, probably closer to $300,000 to get started. Because 100,000 of that, and this is, these are conservative numbers, 100,000 to stock that store, another 100,000 to outfit rental space, and another 50,000 for the initial payroll and other expenses. And that is, as I said, being very frugal. That's a very frugal startup plan there.
Okay, another question. So the, the ABC Commission or ABC board is named, they go and borrow the money, and for whatever reason, it goes out of business. Are the members of the ABC personally liable?
No, they are not.
Okay.
They are not personally liable.
Would they have to carry their separate insurance, like heirs and admission liability?
They do, they have to be bonded, yes. That's a statutory requirement, that all board members and any employees who handle money have to be bonded.
So if any bank is wanting to require them to be, to sign a personal guarantee, they can't require that?
They can't do it, right. So, I want to talk about, so there are some hurdles, obviously. The cost of starting up a new board, you know, the question of profitability, having to do, you know, make a certain amount of money and revenue to be profitable. So one of the options is to merge with an existing ABC board. You don't have to appoint your own ABC board, have your own separate store. You can merge, and there, and there are, in the statutes, it allows for mergers, it also allows for the dissolution of those mergers if the parties involved agree to that. So no merger is, has to be permanent, I just want to say. Just because you merge with someone else doesn't mean your, that merger has to be in effect for the next 100 years.
Is that either party, I mean, if you could have one want to stay in, one want to stay out, so if either one wanted out, there's, is there a certain timeframe of contractual?
No, just that, that it's doable, that the merger is not a permanent thing, that can't be undone.
Okay.
If we merge, that's a split on any taxes that comes in, like with Catawba County, like the town's already doing?
Mergers can be crafted however you want to craft them. The two parties involved make those decisions. So Catawba County, Alexander County, for example, would form, come to an agreement. There's no one way to form a merger. There are other mergers around the state, they're all different. It's whatever seemed fair, you know, felt fair for the parties involved. So there is no one way. Generally, as a general rule of thumb, the board would be, would be made up of individuals from both counties, say. So right now, I believe someone from Taylorsville sits on the Catawba County board. So Alexander County would have one or more members that would sit on the board. So the makeup of the board would change to, to have individuals from both. I'm getting Ray Abernathy, who's the general manager of Catawba County ABC board, is here, so I'm just looking at him for confirmation, so I don't say anything wrong.
So if we do nothing, where with Catawba County? Is that correct?
No, no. Your choice is to appoint your own board, open your own store, or form a merger, and if you want to form a merger, it doesn't have to be with Catawba, it could be with anyone. I'm just saying the benefits to a merger are, you don't have the, the hurdles that you have going out on your own. You have ready-made expertise, you have investment money, certainly you don't have the problem of trying to, you, meaning your board, doesn't have the issues of trying to get funding, because you've got the collateral of an existing system. You're spreading your overhead out over multiple stores, as opposed to, as a single-store board, all the overhead, the fixed costs are yours alone, as opposed to, you know, being divided up by 10, 11 ways. So there are some benefits to doing that. You certainly have, if you're a single-store board, you've got a lot more money tied up in inventory to have sufficient diversity to draw in customers, whereas in a larger board, you can share that inventory around, so there's less tied-ups per store. You can have more products and split cases among stores. So it's, so it's easier to have a great diversity of products and not as much money tied up in them. So there are pros and cons to both. And then that merger agreement would, would set profit distribution. So in the case of Taylorsville, for instance, Taylorsville is one expense department within the Catawba County ABC board. So all the direct expenses of running that store come out of that store's profits, and then a small percent stays with Catawba County as working capital for, put aside for maintenance, upkeep, and then the rest goes back to Taylorsville. So Taylorsville gets the profits from their store.
So Catawba County, I guess leases that building presently, is that the arrangement?
Yeah, the ABC board rents it from the town, just like it did before.
Okay. The sales tax monies, they would stay in Alexander County?
There are no sales taxes on liquor.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes.
Right, all, the taxes all go pretty much to the state. So what stays in Alexander County is the profits that get distributed back.
Yep, okay.
And some law enforcement money and alcohol education money, some, some other monies. But basically, the taxes all go to Raleigh.
And that's just for the ABC sales out of that store?
Correct.
Don't want to confuse anybody?
Right, that's with ABC stores. With beer and wine sales, then a portion of the sales tax comes back to the county, just like it does with other things.
Right. So the agreement is just kind of whatever you work out and hammer out with another ABC board if you want to go that route?
Right, right. So you have to decide what's best for you. I personally think mergers are the way to go, just makes good business sense to, you know, spread out costs, to, to, you know, bank on, to borrow the expertise from someone who's already in the business. And you just have a better-run board when you have the segregation, the separation of duties that you have in a larger board. It's, another problem with single-store boards is, you've got a lot of responsibility in the hands of one person, because you've got one general manager who runs that store, who handles the money. When you can spread that out in a larger organization, you have more controls, more checks and balances, is just a better, from an accounting perspective, is a better way of doing business, too.
I guess obviously audits are required.
Yes, you do have to have a formal, they have a formal audit annually. So I gave you, this is last year's annual report, our one for 2016 has not come out. There is a spreadsheet in the back of this that shows the sales, the revenues and profits and distributions for all the boards. I will caution you, as you look at this, if you see boards who have sales well under that 1 million mark and yet seem to be profitable, nine out of 10 of them or more are going to be older stores where they own their building, there's no, very little overhead, there's no debt, so they, they can do it. A new store, obviously, with the debt you have on that initial startup loan, you can't as easily.
Has there been a newer store in the last five years with demographics potentially similar to us that could be like a model to study and see how they've done? I mean, is, do any come to mind?
I don't know, Valdez, Valdez is one of the newer stores. That's a relatively small town.
Mm-hmm.
And believe me, they have struggled. They did not do what they projected they would do in their first couple of years of sales. Their appointing authority has helped them out financially, but since they had done that, the UNC School of Government has said that that's not an appropriate use of the appointing authority's funds. So I don't think we would allow that going forward, since they have made that declaration.
So the appointing authority has subsidized them for...
Yes, because they, they did. And they now are into their fourth year, maybe, no, no less than four, maybe five, and are just now in the black, which is a little bit too long.
Is it, they two years normally, on average?
It should, yes, it should be. Now, some stores are, you know, profitable right out of the gate, just depends where you're located.
Oh, yeah.
I can't think who else has, we haven't had many single-store startups. When Jackson County voted in, Silva already had a store, so they've merged.
Okay.
And they opened a second store, but it's a merged system now, so they didn't have the same issues that a single-store startup would. Any other questions I can answer for you? I can't think of anything I haven't covered.
And I apologize for coming in late. Work was kind of crazy today, so, and you may have covered this, but as far as sales go to stores, I mean, to restaurants, so say a ABC store's located within Alexander County, so any of those restaurants that serve mixed drinks have to buy from that particular ABC store, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if they're located inside the town of Taylorsville, they'll buy from that particular ABC store?
Correct. If there were a second store in Alexander County, and it were an Alexander County ABC store, then businesses in Taylorsville would go to the Taylorsville store, anyone else in the county, even if they were five minutes from the Taylorsville store, would have to go to an Alexander County store, if they were outside of the town.
So we're not, and say we don't open up a ABC store within the county, the one in Taylorsville will count?
Yes.
And those businesses?
Would all go to Taylorsville.
All go to Taylorsville. So the only reason that we need to even consider opening up another ABC store is just for demand? Is that correct?
Correct, right. There is nothing to prohibit a business from selling alcohol now, because they can go to that Taylorsville store and buy it.
Okay. And I guess you'd be betting that you negotiate a better deal for profitability than running your own store and taking the risk of the revenue versus expenses? Like if, if that's the case, I guess they go to the Taylorsville store. It's whatever Taylorsville's negotiated, their sales, I don't know, I guess they would obviously go up if other restaurants opened in the county, it would be common sense. So actually, their revenue would go up. So would that be a potential driver to renegotiate the agreement? I mean, would that make sense, or would they, would they automatically benefit from that?
They would automatically benefit.
Okay.
Because that would be profits from their store.
So really, all we'll be able to do is, whatever the contract is already, that's pretty much what we'll be...
If, if Alexander County did not, if there was no other ABC store in Alexander County, whether separate or combined, then where Alexander County would see the benefit would be from the sales taxes on that business? Because obviously, the restaurant is selling, when they're selling, they're applying sales tax. So it would, the benefit would be on that end, not at the sale from the ABC store.
But there could be, there could be a scenario, and I'm not saying, I'm not promoting or, you know, pushing either way, due to lack of information. But, I mean, there could be a scenario where the town of Taylorsville still had a contract with Catawba County to run the town of Taylorsville's ABC store, Alexander County decided to operate its own, appoint its own ABC board, and basically, you know, do whatever, you know, to do it themselves, or the town of Taylorsville could stay with Catawba County, and Alexander County could decide to build another, build its own, obviously outside the town limits of Taylorsville. We could, we could work a deal with Catawba County, Iredle County, whoever, if we wanted to, you know, piggyback with them.
That is correct, that is correct. And then the third...
So there's really, there's not, I mean, there's really not a limitation on what we, you know, on what options we have.
No, no, there isn't. I, I see three. Then the third option is, like Montgomery County, Bisco and Mount Gilly had already had ABC stores, the county voted it in, but the county looked at the issue and decided they couldn't make a case for another store in the county, so they worked out a merger agreement, so it's a merge board, and they get a small percent of the profits in lieu of opening another store.
Let me throw one more hypothetical scenario out there, because we have to take all this information and make a decision.
Sure.
So, town of Taylorsville has its ABC store, and the Alexander County decides, we're going to open another one, another location outside of the town limits. And we decide we're going to have our own board, and we're going to do it that way, go it alone, single store. Are the restaurants that are located outside the town of Taylorsville, are they required to buy from the county store?
Yes, regardless of which store they're closer to.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know.
And that becomes a little problematic.
Right.
Because they want what's most convenient, but by statute, they have to go to the county store if they're in the county. Because they want what's most convenient, but by statute, they have to go to the county store if they're in the county.
Okay. Which?
If you were all part of a merged board, that would not be a requirement.
Yeah, okay.
So, so basically, your first question is, can Alexander County support a second store? Where would that store be? And then if, if you think the county can, which is the best way to go? Do you go out on your own and open a store, or do you merge with someone else and leverage their, um, expertise there, funding to have that second store up and running?
Well, that's, that's why I asked about the business plan and the help with that, because you've got to make a, uh, educated guess on what your sales are gonna be.
And you've got to make a really good one, because you don't want to fail.
Just, you just pretend we're in college again and have to do a case study. You know, and just make it up.
So that, you know, that is, uh, information that you just have to pull out of thin air from, you know.
And I would guess that other general managers from other ABC systems would have maybe a good sense of where another store would make sense, just from their experience. You know, the, the general manager of Catawba County, the general managers of the Iredell County boards, would probably have a good sense of whether or not another store could be supported.
And I guess, since the financials are all to the public information, much like counties and municipalities, you could actually go to, I know there's websites, you can pull all the municipality audit financials. You go pull that and you could get some average, like smaller areas, op, general, average operating expense.
Yes, you can.
To plug into that.
Right.
Pro forma, basically. And so you'd have some pretty good data.
Should be in there.
And, and I have them all in detail. I have their annual audits. They're not on our website in a way that you can actually pull them up, but certainly, if you requested them from me, I can send you copies of any ABC board audit that you wanted to study. And that's what other, other boards have done.
Some of these are debt sources and stuff, and some of these are not debt sources.
The other newest board would probably be the Yadkin Valley one, which is a merger of Elkin and Jonesville. Elkin already had a store, Jonesville voted one in, and they realized they didn't need two stores in competition that close together. So they formed a merger, and then they had a local economic development group do an independent study to determine the best location for that store.
That's a new store just opened, what, in the last two weeks?
It did, mm-hmm. And it's, and it's a merge, they merged a year ago, so, um, that's another example of, of a recent election and how it was handled.
Thank you very much.
Well, you all have my business cards, so if questions come up, please feel free to get ahold of me, and I will help you in any way I can going forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Okay, uh, oh yeah, Mr. Hutchkins, how are you doing?
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. Great to be here, and it's a great presentation, uh, that Mrs. Lee gave. I assisted the group that were advocates for the referendum. That's part of the consulting work that I do. I don't really get down in, too much into the weeds of how you set up ABC boards and what you do with that. But the fact of the matter is, you know, a part of my work is to help communities that see a need to pass alcohol referenda, to assist them in that process through messaging, taking a look at voter profiles and analytics, studying past history. And certainly, that's exactly what we did here today. Alexander Ca, or, well, that's why we're here today. Alexander County, well, is a handful of counties who have successfully, um, lost, I say successfully, lost alcohol referenda over the past several decades. Uh, the, uh, city of Ashboro was one of those. And a number of years back, um, I was the lead consultant and helping turn, uh, Ashboro around. At that moment, they were the largest municipality east of Mississippi, who didn't serve, uh, or distribute alcohol in any form whatsoever. And they were concerned about their economic viability. They were concerned because they had one of the state's major attractions, the zoo right there. Couldn't take advantage of that, uh, economy. And we were successful through a very strategic campaign, uh, similar to, you know, what we ran here in Alexander County, except it was much lower profile, didn't cost quite as much, because you weren't dealing with 22,000 registered voters in one compact town. But you had some similarities. The similarities that took place in that referendum with, uh, over here, at that moment, Ashboro was the hometown of the chairman of the board of the State's Christian Action League. And so it was critically important that they make a visible statement to defeat the alcohol referendum. And in years past, they'd been able to do that. Uh, we went, ran a very strategic campaign, uh, to turn that about. And it involved a lot more comple, it was, uh, there were a lot more complexities with that campaign than what we had here. The most similar aspect of the referendum here was the fact that Alexander County, of the 100 counties in the state, Alexander County ranks up there in the top two or three counties that helped support the revenue of the Christian Action League. And so it was critically important, uh, Reverend Creach is a friend of mine, Mark Creach, who is the lobbyist for the Christian Action League. And, um, he and I, I wouldn't say we're chummy friends. We're on the opposite side of this issue. However, he has supported issues that I brought forward to the General Assembly on alcohol. His big issue is expansion. So it was important to him and the Christian Action League that one more time, three years ago, they were successful in defeating this, and they really wanted to make a statement this time. And it was a critical election, and, uh, because of the way you ran the campaign, and because of what's happened between three and a half years ago and, uh, the eighth day of November, there was no reason for your constituents to vote this down. And you saw that in basically a 57, 43 percentage. So that gives you a little bit of background about what I do and where I am. I'm more used to trying to figure out when elections, rather than set up systems. I will say this, from being a lobbyist at the General Assembly that does, represents clients in ABC, I did the, uh, I did the Eastern Bank of Cherokee initial legislation, uh, when they built a casino, simply because, uh, they had a casino and by state law, they couldn't serve any alcohol. And they are a sovereign nation to a certain extent, but the fact of the matter is, they still come under state guidelines for, uh, ABC administration. So, uh, we had to actually bring state law into conformance with the federal code, because the federal code dictated that the, uh, Eastern Bank of Cherokee had to operate their own ABC system. So there are a lot of dynamics, a lot of play. North Carolina, and I think Laurie will admit, North Carolina is a state that has, and I, I don't mind being, I can say what I want to say, she, she may not be able to always, but we have convoluted alcohol laws in this state. You have the statutes, they're that thick, they really ought to be thinner. But the fact of the matter is, historically in the state of North Carolina, it goes way, way, way back, decades and decades, even centuries ago, we have had a general tendency in this state to be anti-alcohol. More favorable toward prohibition, uh, even when it comes to making alcohol choices at the local level. There is a preference of some people out there that don't even want that to happen. Because traditionally, this state is, is, um, we are steeped in a culture that has always been skeptical of alcohol and its use and abuse. And so therefore, it's taken decades and decades to overcome that. Now, you have one county in, of the 100 counties, Graham County, that is, um, alcohol-free. Well, not alcohol-free, they don't have alcohol, but they do have alcohol. They have two facilities in Graham County that serve alcohol, and they serve alcohol, so it's not, it's not completely dry. Uh, they have Fontana Resort, and they have Topo Lodge, which come under a provision that I was part, that I was in the major responsible for getting passed a number of years ago, that allowed, in certain circumstances, permits to be issued by the ABC Commission without an election, a referendum. And so what you've got is, is you've got two facilities in Graham County that are actually wet, and they come under what's called ABC Tourism Resort Establishments. So they don't have ABC stores. And, uh, so this, uh, it's a myth that every county in North Carolina, I mean, every county has alcohol in some way. And, and, uh, it's always there, and, and as Laurie said, those people that are drinking alcohol today, they're the ones that will continue to drink. And, um, uh, they will buy it from somewhere. So the fact of the matter is, this was a monumental election for Alexander County. And it also, on that ballot this time, I think, correct me, Laurie, I think there were 27 various referendum, ABC, and all of them passed. And that's not to say, I mean, you could go back and hypothetically say, well, in Alexander County, maybe we didn't need to spend the money to try to pass a referendum. It might have passed on its own. Well, it may have. Uh, somehow, I doubt that, because there was such a focus from the Christian Action League and Reverend Creach to really hold this bastion of prohibition in their, in, in their portfolio. So, uh, it became important. I think it's time for reform. I don't mean to editorialize, but, um, I think it's time that the state go back and study the alcohol issues, and if we clean all of this up, try, we are one of the most regulated states in the nation when it comes to possession, distribution, uh, and consumption of alcohol. We're one of the most regulated states, and, uh, we're there. We're one of 13, is it 13 control states now? Seventeen. Uh, we are what's called a control state, which as Laurie said, for, for issue, for distribution of spirits of liquor, that means that everything goes through the state warehouse, and the state controls that distribution. We, the state controls all of the cost, that's why you have uniform pricing. There have been suggestions and attempts at the state legislature to privatize that system in North Carolina, but it's failing. Now, when you get into talking about boards and merging and profitability, back in, um, 2009, I believe I'm correct in that year, 2009, there was tension brought by the General Assembly to the fact that there were a lot of ABC boards operating ABC stores across the state that were not profitable. And there had been some scandals within those ABC boards because of somewhat their independence and how much they were paying ABC board members. In fact, it, it was actually in some, I, I think there was a chairman and two of small boards in the state that was making actually more money than the government was making. And so several legislators, which needed to be done, called for a study of the ABC system. And actually, it ended up being a study of what to do to deal with all of these marginal ABC boards that were not being profitable. So they did the study in 2009, and they met in a long session, and they rolled all of those recommendations out in 2010. That's why you see now this whole opportunity and encouragement for you to take a look at creative options, rather than having your own independent standalone ABC board that might not be profitable, to take a look at how you can make it profitable by merging with another small board, et cetera. And, uh, uh, that's why you see that emphasis, and the whole state law changed with respect to that. That's when John Williams, uh, was chairman of the state ABC commission. He worked very hard on that reform legislation. It's very good legislation, and it gives communities the opportunity to really operate an effective system. First thing you want to do is, number one, you provide the service. Number two, you want to maximize the revenue coming to that ABC board, because that's revenue that you've got to work with, you know, to expand it and make improvements with. Uh, so service to your constituents and maximizing the revenue. So the models are creative, and as far as I would say to you, it's just like Laurie said, you need to study that, maybe have your Economic Development Commission hire somebody independently or what have you. There are people out there that do that, there's plenty of economists out there. And they can take a look at the history, they can go back, and they can look at different communities, and they can look at these boards, and they can look at where, where buying is occurring. For instance, our friends over in Catawba County, I would dare say that there's probably one or two ABC stores in Catawba County that people, that residents of Alexander County frequent, or have in the past, because they didn't have any other choice, except go to Iredell County or what have you. Most of them, I understand, go to Catawba. They could probably tell you how many customers they get from Alexander County. And that gives you an indication of, you know, what your volume would be, what might take place. Now, all of that is anecdotal information, but it, there are formulas, there's a way to get that information and bring it in. Uh, so, and this board here, I'm an ex-county manager myself. So I know what you want to do is you want to be accountable to your citizens. You will have to have a system that's accountable. But also, to the voters and the citizens that you represent, you want to make sure, because there are, anytime you have an election like this, uh, feelings carry over. They carry over for months, sometimes years. And the thing of it is, you have an incumbent responsibility to make sure that you are doing the best service possible in terms of being accountable to all the citizens, not just the ones that were in favor of the referendum, but also those that were opposed to it. Because it, even though they were opposed to it, they have a stake and an interest in, in how you administer this program, and also in how you help with the enforcement of, of regulations. The, uh, when you get down to where, and I've talked with Gary and Bud and some of them that were involved in the campaign, dealing with merchants, it's pretty simple. We have a wonderful ABC commission in this state. The staff, I'll put them up, and particularly the staff that issues permits. They really scrutinize permits. They are there to provide a service to the permittee or the person applying for the permit and for these businesses. Because number one, their reputation's at stake. The state's reputation is at stake. But number three, they want to make sure that when they issue that permit, that it is going to a business that is actually going to increase their profits and their revenue and their business, and doing it in a responsible way, and help bring additional tax revenue through sales tax, et cetera, et cetera, back to the county. And they do a wonderful job with it. And it is a series of having to fill out a lot of paperwork. First thing that has to be done, and, and it's real simple. Uh, you go, they go to the website, and it's right there. By far, the lady I work with the most at the ABC Commission, Sally Black. Sally can answer any question that you want, and I've told everybody here, you know, go to her. She will help you through that process. The big important thing for all of these businesses that want to get a mixed beverage permit or, you know, beer and wine on premise, the important thing for them now is they got to get in that inspection queue. There is a very rigorous inspection required. It has to be administered locally from the building inspector. And they have to provide documentation, photographs. They got to show everything that they can possibly show. Where they're going to store, how they're going to secure their, uh, adult beverages. Uh, they have to take an extensive amount of photographs. We, you have to get a sign off from whoever the county designate as the chief law enforcement officer to sign off. officer to sign off. There's a number, and, and it's all right there in the paperwork, and it's pretty self-explanatory. But I will say this, it's much easier for anybody that's got questions to pick up, and I've offered Gary and Bud, if you want to get some of the merchants together sometime, I'll come down and we'll bring people in, we can do a little seminar on this and work with everybody, because it can be a very frightening procedure. It is a frightening procedure and it should be a frightening procedure, because it is very, very serious when you start to sell alcohol. So, you got to dot the i's, cross the t's, and make sure. Now, y'all talked about mixed beverage and so forth. I think Laurie answered every question about that, those that are serving mixed beverages, depending on what y'all do with your ABC stores. Now, that will not prevent them until you get your ABC store in place. If they can get a permit approved before you get your ABC store functioning, if you decide to do a separate one, that can be changed later by the commission or your in-house rules. So, in other words, before you decide what you're going to do, if you've got somebody that the commission has signed off on and is willing to issue a permit, they can buy from Alexan, uh, from Taylor'sville, even if they're out in the county. When you get your ABC store built, if that's what you decide to do, then that's a simple paperwork change that can be done. So, all of that's there, it's a grand opportunity for them, it's a grand opportunity for all of you, and it is about adult beverages and the responsible sale, possession, and consumption of those. And it is, it is a heavy burden. I tell all of my clients, and I'm in the restaurant business, and I don't mind, some of you have heard this story, but I had a restaurant, I have a restaurant in a dry county that I would have off of the Blue Ridge Parkway. Let me tell you, I am a, a fifth generation restaurateur, somebody, my family's been doing it for a hundred and fifty years, I'm the last one. I was dying, because I'm ninety percent tourist, ten percent locals, seasonal. What was happening is, somebody from New York City, driving on the Blue Ridge Parkway, pulled off at Limble Falls, come and stay at my lodge, come to my restaurant, they want a drink, or they want a beer, they want a glass of wine. And I'm sitting there, standing there, saying, "Well, you have options, but not here." "What do you mean?" "You go twenty-five miles to Marion, or you go twenty-five miles to Banner Elk, your And that is the problem, because what you have is, in the tourist areas in North Carolina, most of those areas are traditionally dry, because they're not incorporated, so they're not part of a little tourist town like Banner Elk, or Seven Devils, or something like that. So, it's impossible for them to pass referendum. And so, I dropped ever, I do lobbying work, I dropped every client I had that year, and I said, "Well, I've got to get the ABC laws changed." And we were able to convince the General Assembly to correct that problem with what's called ABC Tourism Establishments, which is that infamous, in some people's mind, Blue Ridge Parkway bill. So, if you've got a hotel or a restaurant within one and a half miles of an exit of the Parkway, you don't have to have an election if you can get the state to approve a permit for it. That led to opening up Pandora's Box in a lot of ways. But tourism is thriving as a result of that, and my wife was chairman of the state tourism board for a number of years. She traveled abroad, back when we had offices in Germany and in England trying to recruit international tourists, which is the biggest export in the United States, by the way, and we did focus groups with the Germans and the Brits. And we talked about this issue in North Carolina, that we had all these dry areas that were traditionally in tourist areas that were popular to the tourists, even Cherokee at the time. The Germans, Cherokee attracts more German visitors than anybody in the United States. And at that time, you couldn't buy any alcohol there. Well, the Germans drank a lot of beer. So, when we did these focus groups, this is just a little bit of humor, the British said, "If I come to your restaurant and I order a beer, and you tell me that you can't serve me a beer because you're not allowed to legally, I will just politely pack up my things and go out the door and go somewhere where they will serve me a beer." It's kind of funny, because what the Germans said was, "Well, if we come to your restaurant and you can't legally serve us a beer, we will leave, but before we leave, we will likely turn the furniture over." Because that's the most ridiculous thing we've ever heard. So, you get into all of that kind of mentality and that kind of attitude. And then, it was funny, and this is a little bit controversial, when we got that bill passed, we were the first permittee with that bill, and the Charlotte television stations descended on my restaurant and asked if they could introduce, interview some of our patrons, because it was the first time that a legal beer, a beer had been legally served in Limble Falls for over fifty years. And it just so happened that the first people that they interviewed was a German couple. And the guy said, "You Americans amaze me." And the TV guy said, "Why?" And he said, "Well," he said, "I was up the road twenty miles." And he said, "I stopped at a little gun shop up there and I could have bought an automatic weapon right there on the spot, but until today, I couldn't buy a beer legally on the Blue Ridge Parkway." And that hit national news. So, the point that I'm saying is, it is controversial, it's sensitive, and it behooves all of us to act in a responsible manner and do what's responsible. Y'all have a little bit different dimension to it, and that is, you've got that incumbent responsibility of protecting the interest of taxpayers in terms of what that revenue is and the accountability of it. So, I'm here to help and I'll do whatever, but you have a great commission and call them. Any questions?
I got, I got a question about, we talked about mixed beverages, but what about on-premise beer and wine sales? So, what's the procedure, is it the same as, same thing? Okay.
It's the same thing. The only difference is, is you pay, you pay a different tax to the ABC store. And, and then you've got requirements, you know, beer and wine's distributed by beer and wine wholesalers.
Right.
ABC, spirituals liquor is distributed through your ABC store. So, you're having a tax stamp and that goes back to the ABC store.
But the licensing itself is pretty much the same?
All the same. And what happened is, two years ago, General Assembly raised that. First time they've been raising in a long time. So, they doubled beer and wine licenses from two hundred to four hundred each, and then they added two hundred and fifty dollars to mixed beverage. So, what you're doing now, rather than paying eleven hundred and fifty dollars annually for a permit, you're paying eighteen hundred. Now, everybody thinks, and I'm going to give you a perspective, being a restaurateur, everybody thinks that you sell mixed beverages, you're making a lot of money. But if you stop and think about an eighteen hundred dollar annual permit renewal for your ABC license, and you talk about that three dollars and seventy-five cent extra tax, in other words, I can't buy liquor, I, I can't buy liquor from my restaurant as cheap as you can go personally and buy it at the ABC store, because I'm having to pay mixed beverage tax. So, if you, if you figure out how much money is in that one and a half ounce shop of mixed drink, it's quite a bit, so then you understand why people mark up those bear, adult beverages to the level that they mark them at. Because it, and, and, and I will say this, this is what it's done for me. Sure, I profit off of the sale of mixed beverages and the sale of on-premise beer and wine. But here's what it did for me. It allows me, it allowed me to improve the quality of the product at my restaurant. I was able to sell more sixteen ounce ribeye steaks, because I could sell beer and wine on premise. People come in, they're going to buy a steak, nine out of ten of them will not buy unless they can buy wine, or a mixed beverage. And so, they trade that. So, what it does to your restaurateurs, it helps them improve the quality of their service in their center of plate entrees. And every one of them will tell you that. And it, it, it just makes all the difference in the world. At the end of the year, when you look at it, yeah, you made a profit off of the sale of alcohol, but it is not manna from heaven, so to speak, because it is very expensive and there are requirements for training and everything.
So, most of your, most of your profits come from the other things that go along with it?
Yeah, the other things. In other words, you know, back until I had, until I had a permit, I sold more burgers, I'm selling more center of the plate entrees, and that's a big feature of the dialing of the ballot, simply because people come in and they sit down and they're going to be more likely to order something, a bigger center of the plate, a more expensive entree, if they can get some type of alcohol to it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to, for the benefit of those here who might be interested in permits, quickly just go through the permit process.
Yeah, that's a question I had, the chronological, okay, say, if I'm a business owner in this past, and I want to serve beer and wine, when can I apply, what do I have to do, what do we have to do so that, you know, we know?
Right. So, the permit application is available on our website. If you go to our website, which is abc.nc.gov, and look under retail permits, under the permits tab, and then retail, there's an application there. The application has instructions in it for all of the paperwork that a permittee needs to provide. And, and that's significant, it has to be a diagram of the premises, there has to be, there's a zoning compliance form that has to be signed off on by your, whoever the zoning board is. There's a, a fire marshal signs off on something. You, as a county, need to designate someone to sign off on the local government opinion form. And on our website, you can see there's a, the resolution template. We always encourage you to give that to a position versus a name, so that if that position changes, you don't have to redo the resolution. It can be your sheriff, it can be your county manager, there's no right or wrong person, it's up to you who you designate. That local government opinion form allows you to give input. If you say on that form, you don't want this person to have a business at that location, that doesn't mean the ABC Commission isn't going to grant a permit, because there are a lot of things we have to look at, but you do get to voice an opinion. So, the permittee gathers up all this paperwork, and then they can either come in person to Raleigh with that packet or mail it. If they come in person and everything is in order, they will leave that day with a temporary permit. If they mail it in, they will get a temporary permit within two weeks. Now, we cannot issue permits until I get a certification from the Board of Elections, I haven't gotten that yet, and I will, I'm not sure they realize I need that, so I will be calling them tomorrow to tell them what we need, because we need the certification, we need a sample ballot to verify that the election was worded properly, all the referendums. So, once we have a copy of that certification, then we can issue a temporary permit. That temporary permit will be good for a minimum of six months. It may be extended beyond that. During that time period, one of our auditors will come out, our audit investigators will verify that everything in the application is correct, make sure that all the laws have been followed, that there are no conflicts of interest, so on. Once they do their investigation, then a, a permanent permit will be issued.
Is it the same for sales without consumption, like for instance, convenience store?
It is, it's the same process, whether it's on-premise or off.
Okay.
And there are, if I can, there are annual inspections?
Not necessarily, but there are.
There used to be annual inspections, but there's not as many ALE officers.
Once the permanent permit is issued, how long is it good for?
One year at a time, and then it is renewed annually. There is an annual renewal fee, or registration fee for beer and wine, it's called.
Same as basically every license in North Carolina expires after twelve months.
Correct.
And you said from the local, it's the zoning that goes out in, I guess in, that's a part of the packet that's submitted to you?
The zoning form, there's something that the fire marshal has to sign off on, and then the local government opinion form, that your designee will sign.
And I assume typically municipalities charge a fee for that, I guess, permit?
I don't know that they do.
The zoning piece?
Their permittee has to be fingerprinted in the process, and I think there is a fee for that.
But I don't think there are fees charged to get those forms signed.
If we're involved, there would be a monthly fee, yeah, more than thirty-eight dollars or something.
Yeah, something like that, I can't remember if there are fees, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Concealed weapons.
Yeah, nobody can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Why don't both of you come up here to the mic at the same time?
I, I don't, is it the same now as concealed carry of the, the amount that they, or does each?
The, the, the local government gets to set that fee?
That, that is correct. And I'll be the first one to tell you, I know nothing about this, I don't know what the commissioner's got in mind, but I hope it's Rick. But seriously, of course, the sheriff's office do whatever to try to abide by the commissioner. But, as far as the fingerprinting, me and my staff has talked to ALE also, and my understanding is that they can go Catawba or wherever to get fingerprinted, they don't necessarily have to be here in Alexander County. I have a policy now for our locals, like for applying for a job or SBI's involved, or whatever, then it's a ten dollar fee, it ain't that much, but still it'd be a fee above the thirty-eight dollars that I'm reading that goes to the SBI.
Okay. All right. Thank you. A question, and if you have like a partnership that owns a entity, do both of those, I assume go through the fingerprint process and are vetted through in the same way?
And, and there is one other thing, and I'll shut up. There are state statutes, but then on the back end of that, there are what we call rules, that the ABC Commission develops around those statutes as a part of the enforcement. So, for instance, there will be things that are in the rules, and that's included in the statute book that Laurie gave you a copy of. There are codifications in, in the rules that you will not see in the statutes, which basically deal with a lot of things, like advertising, for instance, you can't, but you can't have a restaurant go on outside of that building and put, you know, you can't, you can't advertise Budweiser on something outside of the building. It can go on the inside, as long as it's not seen from the outside, et cetera, et cetera. So, it deals with advertising, it deals with a whole lot of other things, like, you know, there are requirements about distances from places of worship and things of that nature. So, always remember that, that when you're talking with people asking for permits, that you read the statutes, the statutes might not contain everything that you've got to comply with and, and how that's supposed to be enforced, so. And those rules change, they don't, the ABC board does, I think, every, every so often they'll go through a review and make really wholesale changes, but mostly those changes are made incrementally as a result of something that may happen that they need to address that they felt like was left out.
And those rules are on the website, I assume?
Yeah, they're on the website, you can get to the rules on the website, but they're also in the back of, of the general statutes, ABC codification.
The best thing to do would be to contact the ABC Commission to begin with, before you do anything.
That's right.
Yeah. All right. We're going to take any questions from the audience, if you have any, and we've got a couple experts here. Yes, come on up to the mic. Come up to the microphone, Gary.
My question is, has the November eighth election been certified in the county?
I'm not sure.
I think it has.
It must be as of November eight, too.
I, I don't think it has yet, Gary, I think they're still working on it, I think some of the-
of the things that were going on, I think they were trying to go through and totally certify everything at one time. And I don't think it has. I think that'd be the question. We need to give them a call tomorrow and verify. Because I know a lot of the counties are having a difficult time based on some other things that's happening in other counties, based on the election, on some things that have happened. And I think they're looking real close in each county at the outcome of each, whatever, whatever was voted on in that particular election. And they're looking real close at it, and decisions have not been made this time.
Okay, so that, right now, that's probably the?
That's probably the number one holdback right now for some people.
That we need to get passed as a certification?
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just think we need to build like a chronological list of items. We need to, you know, so that we're all working from the, the same set of objectives. Because I, I think this is, to me, this is, we're learning a lot as we go here. And, you know, if there is a template out there of best practices that we can copy or plagiarize, I definitely think we want to do that.
And, and different county departments will have some responsibility in this, so, you know, as far as the permitting process goes. So we need to find that out.
Excuse me for my voice. I've had that, oh, cold. I have a question. I know we're waiting, you know, to be certified. And I've had several calls to my office about the sheriff signing permits. Well, am I to sign these permits if they say they're certified tomorrow? Because I'm hearing, you know, you have to appoint. That's my question.
I don't think, we don't have, correct, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I tried, I tried to listen.
The sheriff wouldn't be signing anything unless you designate him as the person to sign that local government opinion. They're assuming the sheriff, because in other places it might be the sheriff, but it's whoever you designate.
We could designate the county attorney, the planning and zoning director, you know, someone like that, or the county manager.
Right. You could, whoever's, right.
So first thing is?
The statute doesn't say who it has to be.
First thing is serve case the results. Then secondly, we need to have that person in place that's appointed. Is that correct?
Right. Now, a permittee could start gathering all the paperwork, but as I said, we won't do anything with it till that certification is in our hands.
And, but, point of clarification, for a business who is looking to, you know, sell on-premises or off, I mean, off-premises being a convenience store, grocery store, whomever, to sell, you know, beer and wine, or for a restaurant to, you know, have mixed beverage or whatever, they, they are not required to wait until we determine whether we are going to create an ABC Board or not, or if we are going to work with another county.
That is correct.
Because they have the op, so we, so the ABC Board portion is not a holdup to, you know, whichever or whomever that owns the business that wants to, wants to go, go for that.
I would consider that a totally separate issue, separate from the permitting process. Right. One does not play into the other initially. It will not hold anyone up from getting a permit, that question. That will just, once a store, if and when a store does open, then permittees within the county would go to them to purchase their spirits, but for now, they'll go to the Taylorsville store. Once they have their permit in hand, then they would purchase their liquor from the ABC store, they would purchase their beer and wine from a licensed wholesaler, whoever the licensed wholesalers are that service this area.
Is there anything on your website, or would it be better if we just contacted another county and said, hey, what are the first steps that we need to get into place to take care of that? You know, as far as, there has to be a, a building inspection done, and I believe you said planning and zoning has to certify that it's in the right location.
Right. There are the actual, the permittee will supply you with the form to fill out. That's part of their packet. So it's their responsibility to get those forms from us or print them off our website, bring them, get them signed, get them back again. And they submit it all as part of their application packet. So you don't have to do anything other than fill out the required form.
But that would be, John, that would be your department, correct, planning and zoning? So do you have any concerns, questions? Because while we're up here and having this meeting, let's get it on the table.
My experience from a planning standpoint, like, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Laurie.
Laurie said, from, I've signed them as a zoning enforcement officer stating that the zoning is compliant. Typically, it's been a convenience store or something like that. I did this for the town of Hudson, let me say, I've not signed any here. That the property was zoned accordingly. There is also a statement on there for building inspections, which does fall under the planning and inspections department, which would require an inspector to go out and do a, a, an inspection of the property. And I think from our, my standpoint, because it does require an inspector to go out and do an inspection just like they would for any other, any other time someone comes in and applies for a permit, that, that we potentially have a fee set, maybe at, you know, another meeting to, to cover those costs.
We, we probably need to do that at the next meeting that we have.
And maybe we, I think I mentioned, maybe we could just ask a couple surrounding counties, kind of what's the traditional fee for that type of service and?
Yeah, and I can.
And vet through that and see if that's a good fee.
You could probably, we could probably find that online. I mean, I'm just. Yeah, I can, I can make a couple phone calls. Like Catawba County and some other counties, you can look, you can see their fee schedule just like you can Alexander County's online. And typically from a zoning standpoint, having done it, like I said, in the town of Hudson, you know, they come in, if, if it's a, if it was a property located on Highway 321, you know, I know, okay, it's zoned highway business, so it's zoned for what that business is, a convenience store. So all I'm basically saying is, it's zoned appropriately. And the business is either, it, it can be conforming under zoning laws that it is a business. It could be a, a business that has been there for a while, a, a superette that's been operating that legally can sell beer and wine for off-premise consumption, that I would just note on there that it's not, it is zoned this, but it is a permitted non-conforming use, which is, hasn't been a problem either.
Well, let me ask this. So Laurie, since, since he, since our planning and zoning director's not gonna know all the statutes that are in place in this, I guess my question is, is, say, say John says, yes, this does meet the requirements for a, a convenience store to sell beer and wine, but what if a, you know, what are the statutes regarding schools and churches and distance to that? I mean, where's that gonna?
Well, that would come into play when the commission either grants, gives them a permit or not. So our inspector would look at that when they go out.
Your inspector does that?
That's at a state level.
Right. All, all your inspectors are doing is signing off on what is specifically on that form. So I think they're pretty black and white, what they're doing. But our inspector will verify that that establishment is at least 50 feet from a school, church, or daycare.
Okay.
I got just one question. On the temporary permitting, you said within two weeks, someone could be selling. If any of these things are not good, is that gonna be checked out? Or they can go ahead and get it, and then the inspections happen later?
Right. If the packet is in order, appears to be in order, right, they can get that temporary permit. But then if an inspector comes out and finds problems, they'll either have to address them, or that temporary permit will be revoked. Which is why they have a temporary for so long, because it's easy to revoke a temporary permit. It's more complicated to revoke one once it's permanent.
But it, it could last for six months then?
Sometimes longer.
But that, that permit?
But it's just a stupid.
That permit application, which I have not seen, but based on what you have said, I mean, includes a veritable multiplicity of information.
Yes, it is very comprehensive.
I mean, it's, no, I mean, there's, I mean, there are pictures and, I mean, pictures and pictures and pictures and?
That's correct.
Everybody in America, everybody in America's signed off on it, saying it's okay, before that temporary permit is ever issued.
During the two weeks, the state's researching, there's somebody actually looking to see if all of those things are in line, or is that?
When they come to our office with that permit packet, the permit specialist will make sure all the right, all the documents are there, properly filled out, properly signed. If it's an on-premise account, they, I believe, and this isn't my area of expertise. I deal with the ABC Boards, not with permitting. But they'll have to provide a menu, if it's an on-premise account, to show they are serving food. They have to have a, a diagram of their premises, showing that they've got a proper kitchen, proper bathrooms, what, whatever. And this is all laid out in the instructions. So based on all that material, a lease agreement, if it's a, if it's leased property, ownership documents, if it, I'm, I'm not sure, but all that material is there. A permit specialist will go through, and if everything is in order, they will issue that temporary permit. Then sometime in the next six months, an investigator will come out, verify that, do additional inspections. And then if everything at that point still looks fine, then a permanent permit gets issued.
So the packet itself has a lot of due diligence built into it?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Since you deal with the ABC rules.
Do you want to come up?
Come up to the microphone.
No, I have one problem.
Ask your question, I'll repeat it.
Whether or not we decide to have another ABC store in this county, other than the one in Taylorville, whether or not, I'm assuming, yes or no, that we are required to establish an ABC Board for the county, yes or no?
So the question is, whether or not they open a store, they are required to establish an ABC Board. The answer to that is no. They're not required to establish an ABC Board. If the county commissioners decide that, that they cannot, that there, another store is not warranted for economic reasons, then they wouldn't, obviously wouldn't appoint an ABC Board. They might decide upfront that they want to form a merger and let that merge board and, and the lev, the expertise already in place determine whether a store makes sense and where the best place is. Then again, they would not appoint an ABC Board. They would craft that merger agreement directly with another ABC Board. And that, of course, that board's appointing authority would have to approve it as well. But no, they do not have to appoint an ABC Board.
Do you see mergers sometimes as transitional? Like somebody wants to go ahead and start, and the merger's a, a more cost-effective way to start out, and then you find later on that you feel like it substantiates itself enough to support a freestanding, then you form a board. Do you see that happen?
Well, it hasn't yet. That doesn't mean it wouldn't. Most folks are happy, happy they went that way and have not decided that it's not in their interest to continue, yet.
One thing I will say though, as a commissioner, and I think everybody else up here would say this too, whatever is decided pertaining to an ABC Board, yes or no, whether there's another county that's, another store in the county, whether there's an agreement with another county to, you know, or whatever, that decision will be 100% based on the return that is created for Alexander County. I mean, our decision will be based on what makes the most financial and fiscal sense for Alexander County from a revenue generation standpoint.
I would agree with you. You have to balance customer service with, you know, good fiscal, you know, policy.
And you mentioned there are, I quote unquote, model heads out there that you can kind of reach out to, to contract with, to, to do an analysis, or use your local EDC. But there is expertise out there, if you feel like we're kind of running out of horsepower with that here.
Yes, there is. And I can help point you in that direction.
If you would, step up to the microphone, please.
My question is to Laurie, if, that we are surrounded by a number of counties, if we leverage the best deal, is that something that you would do? You would negotiate with surrounding counties to see if it would offer you to do a merger?
We can do that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify one thing. The opinion form that comes to us, we're the first stop. The ABC Commission's the last stop. So even if we sign off on everything's okay, if it doesn't get past their requirements, it doesn't matter what, what our opinion form says. So.
And they're looking at a more global thing than you are, I would say.
That's correct.
They'll make the final decision and, and make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted, then?
Right, right. We could say zoning's okay, it passes inspections, but if it doesn't pass muster with them, based on whatever reason, then they, they revoke it. So, you know, we're not as, it's not as much in our hands as it is in the state's hands in regards to issuing any permits.
But if, if our planning and zoning department says it does not meet zoning requirements, then it's pretty much dead. Is that correct, Mrs. Lee? If our?
Just in the sense that a business, a commercial business couldn't open up now anyway, if it weren't in a place that was properly zoned.
Yeah, okay.
But a, as I mentioned before, just from a, from the standpoint, if the business has been there, but the zoning was not consistent with a commercial business, but if it were a superette convenience store that's been there for a number of years, and they filed a permit to sell alcohol, we would note on the permit what the zoning is, we'll say residential, and note that it is a permitted, it is permitted as a non-conforming use.
Which is also, which is also termed grandfather.
Grandfather, that's correct. Yeah. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't say, well, it's not zoned correctly, so we're not gonna sign off on the permit, because we can't legally do that.
Right, I got you. Anybody else?
Ryan, for Monday night, do you want us to have a resolution to designating the person?
Yes, we need to do that Monday.
And do we also want to have something directing a feasibility study on Monday, or do you want to wait and think about that?
I, I don't, I don't feel like we're, I don't feel like we're, we're, I don't think we need to rush on that, just because we've been, we're not, yeah, we're not holding anybody up.
Right. So as long as we do the resolution, that's the main thing.
I don't think we need to just, yeah.
What about the fee?
Now, now the fees, I would say, inspection fees and such as that, we need, we would need to do some research and maybe look at, look at surrounding counties and?
I think, I, I would think we could have that prepared by Monday as well. So then you, you got one, the fee change, or charging the fee, yes, I'd definitely like that on the.
But I mean, do, do we need to make that decision?
No.
I mean, do we need to make the decision on the amount of the fee?
Yes.
Yes, I think we do.
Yes, the board sets the fees.
Okay.
So if we have the resolution to designate the person and the fee?
Yes.
That'll be the steps that we need to do Monday night.
Because, you know, county commissioners have to set schedule fees.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, as far as the feasibility study goes, I think we got time to talk about that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. We got anything else? We need a closed session?
That's right.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion at the second? Is there any discussion? If any, none. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passing now.